I've called meeting to order. We have the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Seaword.
Here.
Ms. Stombach.
And we welcome Councilman White. Jenna, Tyler, welcome. Okay, do we have anything to add or delete from our agenda? Okay, if not, we will follow the agenda that has been distributed. We have our minutes from the June 14th meeting. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? I move we accept the minutes as presented. Second.
Second.
Call this in favor.
Aye.
Okay. I don't know, do we have anybody signed up for the general citizen comments?
We'll know momentarily.
Councilman White.
I probably should have put an asterisk on that. If it's more helpful, I could speak during the code amendment referral discussion about the short-term rentals. But I figured I should put my name on there, just so you know that I'm here to run my mouth.
Um, it's okay, we'll just take up your comments when we get to that point.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have three matters that are scheduled for public hearing. The first one being a public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 111 Baker Drive. The tax map number is 42A17-1197. It's in the planned neighborhood development district. As usual, we have the definition for a lodging house. The requirements that are included in town code section 518 would need to be met. And the additional conditions would be that the guests cannot stay more than 14 days. And the special use permit shall not transfer upon sale of property or membership interest composition of a holding company. We have the application, the property management plan, the outline of the townhouse itself, site map, tax map, and another view of the property. And the notice of public hearing for each of the public hearings that we should consider. Any additional information?
No, sir. We did receive one email comment from Sean Ryan, 199 pasture view lane. As a resident of Luray, I'd like to express my disapproval of lodging permits issued at homes on Baker Drive and College Avenue. We are a community steeped in housing crisis. These homes on Baker and College are designed specifically to be working-class homes within walking distance of major employment opportunities in our community. Approving them as use for lodging is a disservice to our community's needs. These are not mountain cabins or riverfront accommodations. These are homes are a valuable commodity in our community. And while we are a tourism-based community, balance must be achieved for the needs of our residents.
Okay, well, I would agree there that the homes are a valuable commodity. And if people in the community want to purchase these homes, they can certainly do so. It doesn't have to be people from outside the area. If I would choose to go out there and buy one, I'm sure D.R. Horton would be glad to open the door and show me the property and show me where to sign the papers.
That's my feeling too, Mr. Chairman. You know, unless we have a limit put on this, I don't know. You know, why we would deny the request that we just did last time in the same area.
I do see Mr. Ryan's point. I do agree that these are open for purchase and there's no covenant kind of excluding that from this.
And they're already in residential areas all through town as well. It's not strictly a
Just there.
mountain retreat or a riverfront property.
Okay, we don't have anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing, but I do need to officially open the public hearing. And again, no one has signed up, so I will close that public hearing. Any other discussion, comments, questions at this time? Are we ready for a motion?
Yes, sir. I would move that the planning commission recommend the town council consider approval of the residence, rub the request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 111 Baker Drive, tax map number listed in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Ashishra, Bithron, and Nethu Valaban with the conditions as presented.
Mr. Second.
A second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Seaword.
Yes.
And Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
The second matter for public hearing is a public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 172 College Drive. This tax map number is 42A17-216. Again, it's in the planned neighborhood development. And as before, we have the definition, we have the requirements from town code section 518 and the additional two requirements if this was considered. We have the zoning permit application, the layout of the property, the cleaning plan, tax map info, and the tax map.
Do we have an actual signed application?
No, this was emailed, but I did trade emails with the applicant for additional information.
Other questions or discussion? Again, we don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing, but I do need to officially open the public hearing. Hearing no one will close that. So again, any other discussion or questions about 172 College Drive? Just a note, doesn't that sound good to say 172 College Drive? In our town? Okay, other? Any other discussion? Okay, we're ready then for the motion?
I move that the planning commission recommend town council consider approval of the request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 172 College Drive, tax map as indicated, in the planned neighborhood development zoning district for Vanilla Kam Ham Patati. I'm sorry, I butchered that name, with the conditions as presented.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Seaword.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
And Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Okay, the next item for public hearing is to consider a request for a special use permit to operate a childcare facility at 201 East Main. Tax map number 42A11A57. Property is owned business B1. And the application is from every child early learning center incorporated. As noted, preschool and childcare facilities are required to obtain a special use permit under town code section 406.2i. We have the definition. And there are additional requirements for parking in section 506.9. Again, we have the application, the tax map property info, different diagrams of the property. There were concerns that we had noted before, and Ms. Smith has noted and answered those concerns and questions. And there are a number of pictures of planning commission members and town staff who took a tour of the property with Ms. Smith. And we do have one letter that was included in support from Josephine Holselton. Dear sir, I am writing in support of a special use permit for the childcare center. Our community is in dire need for a learning center for special needs. An all-inclusive center is a wonderful idea. I fully support this center. Okay, stay with us. Are there additional?
There are. Ms. Holselton's address was 9 Hawksville Heights Drive here in Luray. We received another from Valen Rogers, 175 Outpost Road in Luray. I apologize, I misunderstood the topic of discussion for tomorrow's meeting. I have revised my letter to support the special use permit for every child's learning center. I have revised my letter to support the special use permit for Every Child's Learning Center. The next is from Brittany Folks, 105 Posey Lane, Stanley. To whom it may concern, allowing the opening of an all-inclusive daycare within our community would be very beneficial. With it being geared towards individuals of all backgrounds and abilities, I feel it would greatly impact our town for the better. Having staff that are trained to deal with all the different needs of children would help our local parents and help to prepare the children as they move on to school. Also, I believe having two daycare centers in our area would be great since there is a huge need for them. Another email from Alicia Marie, 471 Mount Carmel Road. Hello, as a citizen of Page County for years now, and one who sent their children to St. Mark's, I'm writing in support of Ms. Smith's special use permit. The county needs a good, decent daycare for any child. Ms. Smith has been doing amazing things for people of our little county, and I believe she can give any child, especially special needs children, a great head start in learning. Every child needs some type of schedule and enlightenment at every stage of their little lives. If she is willing to provide this, please give her a chance. Another email from Alexandra Sailor of 192 Owens Drive in Stanley. Hi, I want to start by saying my name is Alexandra Sailor, and I'm sending you this email due to the new childcare opening in Luray soon, hopefully. I want to start off by saying, as a mom with kids, and on top of that, both of them being autistic, it is really hard to find childcare in our county that is actually qualified to take care and provide for special needs children. And it is also hard now for a days to find a childcare facility to help parents out that don't cost an arm and a leg, and not just for special needs children, but for all the children in our community that needs someone to watch them. And I do believe if this daycare opens up as quickly as possible, it would really help our community and help with more jobs for people in our community. This daycare is very important to open because, as I said before, it is hard to find childcare nowadays. And it also gives the special needs children and the other children in our community to be around other kids that are in a way different than them and can help the other children understand that everyone isn't the same and how to be around other children who do have special needs. And also, Ms. Smith would be an amazing person for owning this business and knowing how to run it due to she has special needs children and also has her teacher's degree in helping children. Thank you for reading this email. Next email was from Title Wilson, 40 East Main Street. Good afternoon, Mr. Burke. I'm writing you this email to encourage the approval of Every Child Early Learning Center's request for a special use permit. It's my opinion that the community needs a center like this to better meet the needs of our families and our community. I also endorse Jenna Smith as a standout citizen, rising high, to offer a space for all of the children in our community. And the final email is from Brooke Williams, 1604 Dobell Hollow Road, Stanley. Hello, my name is Brooke, and I'm a resident here in Page County. I really need this center for my children. One of my children was just diagnosed with autism, and I am grateful for the center and the help it will be for me and my family. I just wanted to share my support of it and say how needed it is in our community.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing for this matter. Ms. Smith?
Okay, so thank you for all coming out and checking out the facility to address the few things we brought up while we were there with some... Full name. Jennifer Smith, 129 Vickers Ferry Road. To address some of the things that were brought up to kind of put into place, we have purchased cameras for the facility. We have a locked doorknob that staff will have a code to get in, and it'll remain locked throughout the day. Only I and St. Mark's will have the key. Everyone else, staff will have their own code. And we are in the process of working on getting the materials for the privacy fence for the other two sides. And for parking, I've been in plans to speak with Bradley's, but they've had a lot of funerals lately, so that's when I can hit up. However, I have spoken with the Farm Bureau, and we plan to use some of their spaces.
Southern states.
Yeah, in front of the Southern States, yeah. So I've spoken and kind of gotten what they're looking for. They just need to have their official meeting and approve it that way. But that's looking very likely.
There's the Farm Bureau insurance.
Yeah, it's right in front of Southern States.
I'm sorry.
It's like right at the, if you go the alleyway, right there. And so it would work well too, because staff who have children in the center would be able to drop their children off the same way all the other parents, and then go park and then come back. So it would work out well for that purpose.
Are there questions?
I just want to make a comment first, that enjoy the tour. You were very informative, lots of information, and you tolerated our questions, whether they were pertinent or not. You know, so very much appreciate that. So I just want, thank you for doing that.
Wanted to ask your accreditation now. With the facility you're opening, do you need a license from the Department of Education?
Yes, sir.
Where do you stand in that process?
One of the last things we needed was the certificate of occupancy, which fortunately we were able to get signed and submitted. So we are in the final, they're just reviewing all our paperwork right now. But before we open, we will be accredited in that sense. In order to, also to be able to accept the subsidy through Department of Social Services, we have to be state licensed, and that obviously is a big thing for families in this community to be able to afford care. So we will get our final approval end of this month. And then, our plan was to open August 1st, but we'll just have everything in place. So as soon as we get the, from the town, we'll open our doors.
I read through the requirements. It was 39 pages long of all of the things that needed to be accomplished in order to receive that license.
Mm-hmm. I've been working on it for months now. It's a long process.
So, question for Steve. The parking, and the parking requirement. I don't see, actually, in this little excerpt, but where it has to be onsite parking, so...
Well, it is specific that it is onsite. However, further in the explanation of supplemental regulations for parking, it does provide that if an agreement can be reached for a remote parking, and there is a specific radius of that, it can qualify for the parking requirement. So if Ms. Smith is able to secure parking at Southern States and at Bradley to meet the required parking for staff, that would then comply with the town code.
Even if she couldn't, I don't see a terrible parking problem on Main Street at this point. They have church every Sunday, and, you know, they're there. There's more people probably parking for church than will be parking for staff, from my view.
Unfortunately, the code is just specific to the parking requirements for this type of facility.
Any other information that we need?
We're excited. We're looking forward to be able to meet more of the needs of the community, especially those that do commute out of town to be able to support their families, and so be able to provide that childcare for these families and the families of children with special needs is going to be a really big benefit to this community. And I am especially looking forward to, as a parent with children with special needs, having a place for my children to go.
Nice to hear those comments from the community.
Yeah, I was.
Other questions for Ms. Smith?
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing then, but we're still open to discussion. I just say that if all those requirements are met, John says there are like 39 pages of requirements.
There was also a lot of other things in addition to that about the complaints that I made. Ways to resolve issues, but I mean, it was 39 pages. I was amazed at all of the information that was required in order to get a license. You do have the opportunity to get a provisional license or a temporary license, but do you feel you'll be prepared to get the license issued? I move that the planning commission recommend the town council consider approval of the request for a special use permit to operate a childcare facility at 201 East Main Street, tax map number 42A11-A-57 in the business B1, zoning district from Every Child Learning Center as presented.
Any other discussion or fact? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Good.
Yes.
It is definitely needed.
One more step taken. Okay, we have some other items for updates and discussions that we can discuss this evening, but will be coming back to us at another meeting. Okay, the first one is a request for a special use permit to install a manufactured home on Parcel, tax map number 42A11-18885. This is on Fourth Street, and the address will be determined later. This is in the R4 High Density Bloomfield Residential District. It is permitted in Town Code Section 404.2E. The applicant is seeking to replace a manufactured home that was destroyed by fire a few years ago. We have the requirements from the Town Code. I won't read those because, again, this is basically for discussion this evening. It'll be coming back to us next time. We have the application, pictures of the property, tax map info with the tax map. Any other information that we need here, Steve?
Well, if approved, this will result in someone having their address changed. If you look up at the map, the property immediately to the northeast is 503, and the addresses to the immediate southwest are 505 and 507. So we have been in discussion with the county 911 addressing staff, trying to determine how best to approach this. But with little wiggle room, there will most likely be a address reassignment following any approval of the new home at that lot. Not that it has any bearing on the application, but things are always complicated.
Post office will take a while to figure that one out.
We can get you to sign the letter to the unlucky.
Oh, Rusty just done it for me.
But yeah, there's nothing, nothing.
It'd be putting a house on a piece of property that's vacant right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or info at this time?
Just for clarification, so this says mobile home. And through Clayton, but Clayton also, if I'm not mistaken, does the modulars. And I just want to make sure, because there is a distinct difference between a mobile or manufactured home and a modular.
I had that discussion with the applicant, and she confirmed she is not looking at a modular or sectional home. She is looking at a manufactured home.
So truly a mobile, single wide mobile.
I think she is looking at a double wide.
Double wide, okay.
But yes.
No, she said single wide.
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
Still 1,034 square feet. All right, again, any other questions or discussions at this time? Okay, the next item then that we can discuss this evening is a request from Pretty On Y'all LLC to install a sign on the south face of 58 West Main. It would extend, the sign would extend into the right-of-way over the West Main Street sidewalk. It would be mounted on structures that are already there. We have Town Code Section 801.4K that prohibits signs over the right-of-way, but there can be an exception in 802.4. We do have the conditions that would need to be met. The liability insurance in excess of a million dollar coverage with the town as an additional insured. Signs will be maintained in good condition, be removed when appearance deteriorates. Signs shall be removed on closure of business. Signposts and anchorings shall be inspected annually by a qualified structural professional engineer. Any questions or other info on this sign that we'll take a look at next month?
It sounds like it's just replacing the Shenandoah Moon sign.
Yeah, I have a question. What's going to go on this sign? Like, what businesses there?
I believe, and I apologize.
Retail sales of arts and crafts.
Yeah, Pretty On Y'all, I believe is what the sign will read. And unfortunately, we were not able to locate any permitting associated with the previous sign, which is, and would at least have allowed us some history as to it being there, but because it is refacing, it is considered a new sign.
I don't remember a projecting sign there.
There's actually two. There's one that projects to the east that is not in the right-of-way, and there's one that projects to the south that does extend over the right-of-way.
Big trucks go down that old street?
No, it projects over the sidewalks.
Lots of notes.
Yeah. Our sign gets hit all the time, right there at North Hawksville. But the sign seems to be...
I thought there was a sign there for the parking lot.
There is. It's been replaced a couple of times.
Could like to hit that one.
Yeah, in discussion with Brian Crisman, he has recollection that a pizza place was located... that a pizza place was located there and he believes that the sign went up with the pizza place. But again, looking through our permitting, we've, we've not been able to locate anything.
Fifty-eight and fifty-eight, there used to be fifty-eight on there too, didn't it? Fifty-eight West, I think it was a job shop or something like that.
Something there, yes, yes, it's, yeah, a number of things.
Job shop.
Okay, any other discussion at this time? Okay, those two will be advertised for our August meeting. The next item, item agenda, agenda item eight C, the discussion on the code amendment regarding short-term rentals. The town council has referred this review to the Planning Commission to review appropriate locations for short-term rentals. The evaluation is requested to include the appropriateness in denser zoning districts, minimum lot size consideration, other recommendations to improve the town's consideration of future applications. We have information showing the number of hotels, bed and breakfast homes and lodging houses. We have a summary and then the list of the short term. And in that list of short term, it includes the hotels and bed and breakfast. And the layout of the town array showing where these are located. And Councilman White has brought in some additional info. Would you like to?
Thank you very much. Yeah, sorry about adding to everything that you already have in front of you, but strange being on this side of things after the last few months. I'm surprised I didn't like pipe up and try to say yes on a roll call vote or something. This is just an issue that's been floating around for a while. I mean, the frequency of these applications has really increased and had a lot of people in the public reach out with concern. I mean, we've got, you know, our Lou Ray Downtown Initiative Director and some of our businesses have expressed concern just because of like housing workers in a really tight housing market. Our Assistant Town Manager, Brian Christman, has had some concerns. He's got some remarks that I printed out for you all as well. Page one, various nonprofits that deal with housing, also just neighbors that have concerns about neighborhood character. At the same time, there's a lot of benefits. I mean, a lot of these have gone in in places that were otherwise vacant, derelict, and because there's a huge financial incentive in operating one of these, it incentivized actually restoring those buildings and bringing them back into usable condition, which is positive. There's also the taxes that are collected and other things that enhance the community. So I felt the need to, to research the issue and try to give a response to all the folks that have expressed concerns. And that came in the form of trying to propose a compromise that I think would work well for the people that already own and operate these businesses, but also address the concerns that people do have about neighborhoods. To give context to what you've got in front of you, the first thing is sort of a write-up of what my thoughts were, and this was informed by a discussion with Assistant Manager, Town Manager, Brian Christman, who's taken a really close interest in the issue. There's also some remarks from Mr. Christman, from some conversations that we've had. And there's also a copy of a poll that Page Valley News conducted, which granted is not by any means a scientific poll, but it was a poll of a decent number of people who care enough to look into that outlook for our county and vote. And you see a pretty strong majority of people in that expressing concern. You also see a good plurality of people expressing interest in the potential benefit. So I wanted to try to thread the needle and where I landed was maybe drawing the line in our highest density residential districts, which would be R three, R four, which is the Boomfield, R five, which is your apartments and denser places, and the PND, which has really small setbacks. Because those places, if you read the, the character intent that's in the zoning code are the places that are for, you know, denser family development that's affordable, people that work, kids are going to school, et cetera. I can actually read from the description for R three, just because I think it's instructive. District is composed of certain medium to high concentration residential uses. Regulations for this district are designed to stabilize and protect essential characteristics of the district and to promote a suitable environment for family life composed of an adult population with children. To these ends, retail activity is sharply limited and the district is protected against the encroachment of general commercial or industrial uses. So to just outline the proposal that I had come to, if we were to remove short-term rentals as a use that is permitted in these high residency, high-density residential districts, they could continue to be established in your business district where they're currently a by right because they are a commercial use. And they would continue to be permitted by a special use permit in R two, which also happens to include, you know, some neighborhoods with historic homes that could benefit from the restoration incentive that comes with operating something like this. At the same time, you're drawing a line in those high-density residential neighborhoods and saying, these are the places for, for families to live. We want to draw a line, not have supply be eaten up insofar as that's possible. For those who currently operate in those districts, they wouldn't be harmed, they would continue to be able to operate. New ones could continue to be established in B one and R two. And actually, frankly, the ones that are operating now in these affected districts would probably benefit because their, their market share is solidified by doing something like this. So I thought that it was potentially a good compromise. It would only actually affect currently, you know, only about a third of units are even in these districts, but it's just drawing a line and saying, these are our neighborhoods for families. Here are these other districts where this use is more appropriate. So we're not getting rid of the market or getting rid of the potential benefits. We're just putting up a barrier that can sort of honor the concern that a lot of citizens, staff, nonprofit leaders have brought. So I just, I wanted to propose that and offer that context. You've got my thoughts that are written up here. Again, the Assistant Town Manager's remarks and this poll. And I would just encourage you all to discuss it, bring your wisdom to it. And I imagine the course of action would be to take a vote if you thought appropriate and recommend staff to look at the language that would be, you know, necessary to get this done and then refer that to the town council. And maybe you would, you know, deviate as, as much as you think is appropriate or not do this at all. I mean, it's totally in your ballpark, but I wanted to try to bring my due diligence to it and I appreciate you.
Questions or discussion?
I think that's a little premature, actually. With looking at the numbers we have here, I don't see that, that, that's even an issue at this point. I mean, it could be an issue in the future, but we're far from that, I believe.
I would, I think Mr. Christman had a strong quote on that, maybe stronger than anything that I would have had, which he had, let's see, said, "I disagree with the concept essentially that all development is good development since reproductions can be more problematic and costly to citizens in both tangible and intangible means. I'm not a fan of allowing a foreseeable problem to occur until someone complains. By then, the operation is permitted, established and functioning with significant investments by the owner too large to then require them to change significantly." So that's, that, that was just the take, that you wouldn't want to wait for it to potentially become a problem. And since so many people have expressed a concern, it might be appropriate to draw a line like this while still, as this does, preserving it in the districts where it's actually already occurring the most, which R two would be untouched and in business. But again, it's totally your guys' whatever the word I'm looking for there.
You know, it's hard to look into the future and know what, what the market's going to do. And I think you're a little bit ahead of it at this point.
Absolutely.
If there, I, I do understand the concern. I just don't, looking at the numbers right here, you've got seven, eight, nine, not that many. So I get it. You don't want, not all good development is, is wanted, but you know, it's hard to find a problem when it isn't.
Certainly. And I just, I felt compelled to give people this follow-through, but it's, it's, you know, it is, it truly starts with you guys and you guys have the experience and judgment that dwarfs anything that I can bring at this point, but I just wanted to give people that follow-through from my end and I appreciate you guys.
Appreciate it.
So are, are the comments coming from, the discussion comments in the community coming from neighbors of people that are, that currently have these sort of properties? They coming from people that have the short-term rentals that think that there's too many, they can't rent their properties? Are there concerns from neighbors that are next to these properties?
I'll, I'll try to speak to it and then I'll also toss it to the town manager because I know he would know more. There's definitely been neighbors that have reached out with various issues. I actually spoke with somebody today who had relayed an issue about, I think it might have been one of the college drive ones, not to pick on a neighborhood, but there was a large group and they said they had an issue finding their parking near their driveway. So you, you've got the neighbors, you've also got a lot of people that rent or younger families that are looking for a home that, and again, we don't have this data to say this, but they, they feel that maybe this contributes to some of the tightness in an already super tight housing market where to rent, you kind of have to know that your cousin's uncle's landlord has an opening. A lot of things aren't really advertised. So, so those are some things. And then I'm, I'm trying to remember the other kind of class of people that have relayed concerns, but those are the, the kinds of people that I've seen.
What is the T O T revenue for the town looking like for?
Well, it, it, it's gone up. It's been about three hundred thousand and it's, it is going, it is increasing each year.
And I guess one other quote that I thought Mr. Christman brought that was strong was, excuse me, sacrificing the nature of residential for individual use at the cost of other neighbors is a precursor to changing at all. When we do it over and over again, we as a government are contoning and supporting such uses primarily in the pursuit of lodging taxes, which are miniscule compared to the short and long-term property impacts.
Why doesn't Mr. Christman come?
Well, he, he's welcoming family. He, he's, he's welcoming family.
You're just quoting from Brian.
Yeah, well, I, 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 I could, I could quote my extensive write-up, but I'm trying to not bore you guys with my words printed into me droning. I'm just trying to draw from that in my mind. He's got family tonight. He wanted to be able to attend, but I, I figured it would be, it would be stronger than just me mouthing off as some random newbie to the block, but.
I'd rather hear from you than hear through you.
I got you.
Well, and I understand, and I think there is a need for discussion. We've had, you know, we've had the same questions, you know, about, about when.
When it's too much.
Right, but it, it's to Bill's point. I don't, I'm not sure we're there yet, but it's getting a lot of attention because we are, you know, every single month we're looking at three.
Three or four.
Or four, where we went, golly, five years with maybe three or four for the whole five years. You know, so, so I understand. It's, it's getting everybody's attention and I think it's a, it's an important discussion to start, certainly.
And I think, I think the more you get, the harder that it would get to have that future conversation, like it's, there's the premature concern because you don't want to be too activist in that sense, but also I can't really imagine the conversation being able to go anywhere once we think it is a problem, because then you're going to have a lot of, you know, vested interest and people that you're potentially asking to change some things. And I, I just think it's harder to cross that bridge than to.
It just seems to me that the majority, that at least half of what we have approved have been out at the new facility behind Walmart. And they're being bought, it would seem to me, by people who want to visit the area but don't want to live here. There's still plenty more out there to be sold, but.
And they do pay significant taxes. I mean, it's not to downplay benefits.
The breakup was of the, the special uses that just came from that area as opposed to the rest of the community. We do have a lack of lodging in community in here with hotels in the town array or a town that is the headquarters for a national park and, and an attraction like the caverns. We do not have a lot of hotel rooms. So it's been, probably helped the community in that regard of people staying and spending more money in town. But yes, it's.
And I, I don't have a personal axe in any way. I just, I, when it keeps coming, I just felt that I, I've got to give people some kind of follow-through and after this, regardless of how this goes, I can wash my hands and say, hey, guys, I tried.
Well, and as far as it getting too far along, I mean, in my mind, the, the process is pretty simple as far as when we feel like, or the, the town council feels like, you know, enough is enough and then we just stop. And everybody who, who was approved before it's grandfathered in, it, you know, and it's, it doesn't carry over to new owners anyway, right? Am I?
That's correct, right?
That's one of the conditions that's been placed on that, Ms. Smith.
It always seems to me that a lot of these properties, my family is one of the properties on this list as well. It seems as if a lot, a lot of local people that have been established in the community were ones that were developing these to begin with. And then just recently, it's almost become like a business decision. And I think that's why there's a lot of heartburn all of a sudden as well, because, yeah, it's like an outsider viewpoint where it's, you know, it's people coming in to live in DC and they're just buying it to do that. And yes, I don't, I don't, I feel a little weird about that myself, you know, personally also, but you know, on the other hand, at this point again, I think they have the right to do so.
Because the houses, the houses are out there for sale for, for anybody, right? You can't say, you can only sell them to people in Page County or Chando County or Rockingham. They're, they're up for sale.
I guarantee you, there's more than what's on this list.
And I know our staff does.
You go to legal.
Yeah, and I know our staff does a lot of, a lot of work on identifying violators and also trying to work with people nicely that just didn't realize there was a process to go through. But I, I appreciate you guys and it'll help me clean my conscience for people regardless of how it goes. I hate to, to be the guy to add a lot of time to your guys' meeting, but I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can certainly discuss it again. Okay, unless there's something else on that matter, the next one is one that we have discussed for a number of times now, the accessory dwelling structures. Again, we're continuing discussion of Town Code related to the accessory dwelling structures. It's in Article five, Chapter five sixteen. Are there questions or other discussion?
Nothing has changed since the previous meeting. It's just that two members weren't in attendance at that meeting and the commission felt that before there was any consideration of advertising for a public hearing, they wanted to make sure that the majority of, of the members were comfortable with going forward with the revisions.
When I was thinking about this, first I thought, well, this probably isn't going to result in a lot of applications. It does take a special use permit in, in any of the districts. And then I thought, well, you know, there are detached garages. The first house that I bought, Moyer Avenue, had a very nice detached garage with a porch and fireplace and it was a nice, nice garage.
Fancy, yes.
Yeah. And it's, it's still out there, I think. So maybe there are more, there may be more of these. I don't know if we have any, any idea, but there, there might be more than what I would think.
And I think that was the intent of council was recognizing that as it's currently drafted, it is very narrow in the area that it, it applies to or it, it allows and that by expansion there might be the opportunity to. there might be the opportunity to expand some of the housing stock within the town at a relatively minimal cost to the, the property owner, and better utilize the property if they, if they desire to do that. And as is demonstrated, well, during our discussion, there are a number of Virginia communities that have recently considered the expansion of the accessory dwelling structure, just for the same reason that, that council referred it to the planning commission, is just trying to accommodate larger families or, or multi-generational families that, that are looking for opportunities to keep people close to them.
So, the way it's proposed now, it would be, again, by special use permit in V one, R one, R two, R three, and R four.
Correct, and there are a few stipulations in the R one zoning district that the structure had to be existing before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. In the remaining districts, you could construct a new dwelling, a new garage, and then apply for the, the special use permit to have that considered as an accessory structure.
Is there other discussion at this time, or are we ready to have this advertised for August?
They're ready to advertise it.
Any other discussion? We'll add that to the public hearing notices for August. The last item we had under the updates and discussion concerns the Luray Landing preliminary and final plat. Further information?
No, the applicant is here to provide an update, we weren't, we did not receive the preliminary and final plat for, for the commission's review.
Mr. Austin.
Good afternoon, I'm Tyler Austin, I represent the applicant and the owner, Baker Development, and who's going to develop this property, which is Landmark Atlantic. Thank you tonight, I did not present the final plats for you guys tonight, because of some things that have come up since I submitted for your approval. I'm in, I'm here tonight for two parts in particular, obviously, this, this being the first and foremost, but it will branch off into something that, obviously, good timing on what we've been talking about as well. But since submitting the preliminary and final plats, we also concurrently submitted our site plan to the county, and are developing the water models, how we're, how we're going to distribute the infrastructure for water and sewer for the town review. In doing so, you've got to get to that certain point to then allow what the construction costs are going to be, and allow those contractors to determine those development costs. And in doing so, about the time we submitted, we've got enough to get them those costs, and we, and we kind of put that in as a, per lot cost is how you do it in development, or even this day and age is starting to get to a per foot cost of road, honestly, and that's where I'm going to after what we discuss here. So basically, the costs have come back, and it is not feasible at the moment. I wanted you guys just, moreover, as a, as an informational piece, so typically in the town, especially P and D, with what we just put in with Baker, College, Allison, right, we have curb and gutter, sidewalk on both sides, thirty-six foot width, with townhouses, we have additional parking on street. With that comes, obviously, your water and sewer, but you also have a lot of storm drain, storm structures, pipe, those, those infrastructure costs, and that's needed from the town's perspective to be able to apply to V dot for maintenance dollars, to then maintain these roads, right? Once, once they're complete, once Baker's done, the town takes that road in, and therefore, they, they maintain that for eternity. And they need to be able to meet the regulations that V dot's saying, you have to meet this type of road standard, so that we'll give you that money to maintain them. So that's first and foremost in the town's mind, and that's how the code's written, that's, that's the reasoning why the town has the standards that we do in place. There is a section in, so, so when it is this type of roadway, when you have the full curb and gutter, the full, what I call the higher end of that subdivision street standards from V dot, you get, you either have to have a higher end housing, in single-family, you have to have something probably closer to half a million dollars to offset that per lot cost, you have to have something to make that work, or the density increases, and you get the townhouses, where you get more on the street, that per foot cost, we can, we can afford that, they can make the models work. So, nothing in the P and D, to my knowledge, that I can find, requires curb and gutter in the single-family section. It does require in the townhouse section, which makes perfect sense, we have, as you can see, we have very tight driveways, we have to have on-street parking there. I've also looked, and the subdivision street standards for V dot, the current street standards, do allow a shoulder and ditch section, and a shoulder and ditch section is what you would see more of a secondary road, where you have a little wider shoulder, you do not have curb and gutter, but then you have a ditch section. And I've seen this in plenty of subdivisions, West Lou being one of those, you know, an older subdivision where they just build it that way, you've got culverts, there's a lot less piping, a lot more ditch work, which is a lot cheaper to, to construct. So, from what I'm finding, and I am going to confirm this before I submit this to staff, and I will sit down with Steve and Brian before I submit this, but I'm looking at, for the first time that, since I've been an engineer in this town, that we're going to submit a shoulder and ditch section roadway with sidewalk down one side, and see, because I would like to still meet the intent of the P and D, and meet those amenities that we're doing, the soccer fields, those, those areas, but in this case in particular, we're a very good spot, we're over here in this corner against Airport Road, it kind of melds very well with West Lou, and that's the only, there's one other option that I don't really want to go to, and that tends, and Steve's familiar with this as well, when you get into now private roads within town limits, putting that onus on the homeowners association, just in my brief experience, fifty years down the road, that's going to be the town's responsibility, something's going to happen. I, I won't say that, because now, as, as bad as previous experiences, because they used to never have the, the deed work, the recordation on file at the courthouse with your HOAs that require them to do these maintenance. Back in the day, it was Johnny home, Johnny developer would make an LLC for that development, you walk away from it, you never know who did it, and ten years, now you've got a pond to maintain, you've got all these issues, we have some of those in town right now. I don't think it's anywhere near that, this point in time, this day and age, but it still is a concern from the town's perspective. You know, we're, we're putting a private street within town limits, that ultimately could be the responsibility of the town, and then you get a subdivision like West Lou, and now you have to maintain that, and you do not know what was put in, any of those standards. We have a lot, a lot better system in place nowadays, I don't see that being as much of an issue. So, from that perspective, I wanted to let you guys know that from the plat end of it, nothing's going to change. We're going to have a fifty-foot right away, you'll see nothing different from those preliminary and final plats, but I, but we, but to make this work, and this is now the third time in a row, on different developers, two in the town of Luray, this one is, that, that were slam dunks, I mean, this one is literally already in the P and D, we've got a master land use plan for it. If we can't make these work in town, where we do have amenities, I just, it, it, it's tough to me how we're going to make this work. And I had a seventy lot, that would have been an easy annex into town, we have a part of that already there, we looked at, same exact thing. These development costs for the roadway in particular is what does it, with the sidewalks, curb and gutter, and the street width we need. So, um, so that's on this particular project, is where I'm headed with that, and I think we have a good case where we can get the funding, they meet, it meets the V dot standards, so that we can still get maintenance dollars for that, and I don't, on the, on the surface, see that as an issue, and I'll certainly talk with Steve and Brian more about that, make sure I'm not missing anything there. But, very timely, I think, moving on to, as a global issue, with our discussions of short-term rentals, and their long-term benefits and issues we have, and I fully agree with your decision in the townhouse, where we're at now with what you're approving, I think that high density, I don't believe at the moment we would be, have sold near what we have, would have sold if we would not allow that to happen, I think development would have stopped, and I think Councilman Pettit said that in one of the meetings, that the development of Luray Landing would have halted if we would not have allowed this to occur. So, in certain situations, like you all were discussing, we have to find that blend of what is that, what is that mix? And, and how does that impact us, but, um, but I do plan on trying to put together somewhat of a white paper, very similar to what Mr. White put together for you guys, to talk about more on, on the single-family side of it, and what the issue that we're seeing in our industry from the engineering side and planning, that a town, a county like Page, we need affordable housing, affordable single-family housing, and it, I don't want it in terms of affordable, where we have to apply for situations like, like Luray Meadows, but we need housing that our, our folks, our community people that live here can rent and own. And I've looked at it from a personal side, and various ways to develop, to purchase, to do subdivision, go through the right channels, you utilize my expertise, and you just cannot make the numbers work. And a humongous part of that is the, the site development cost specifically with roadway development. So, you know, various cities and towns across the nation have these issues compounding with short-term rentals, and being that source of, all right, if we wanted to take them in R one, now we don't have rentals, now we don't have, we don't have a place for our people to live, and two specific examples, kind of tying into what you guys were asking. I know for one, Tracy, Boxburg is having a severe issue with short-term rentals, taking away space for staff, for graduate teachers and assistants, there is no housing in Boxburg, they are having a, in a severe shortage there. And the same way in Outer Banks, where in the summer typically your kids come in, and they stay there over the summer, they rent houses, and they work in your restaurants, the restaurants are dying, because they have no, no people to come on their breaks to work, because there is nowhere to stay. So that is an issue, and I don't know the answer, and I think it's something we all going to have to work towards, and see where that balance lies, but, but we had a couple of, in my opinion, slam dunk opportunities here, and this one is not, is not dead on the vine, but where this should have been, boom, build it, go, now we have housing, right? So, I, I just want to, to start the discussion with you guys first, because the town is the opportunity to be able to do something like this with our water and sewer that we have, we have very good amenities here. And you guys at the planning commission, that might be the place where we start kind of getting our wheels turning on how we look at what we can do as a community to not long-term hamper the town, but, but to, to bring in the ability to start these single-family developments. And I truly feel, in my opinion, and I've heard various things in some of this blue collar industry that we do have in our county, what little we have left, that they are going to leave, if we do not help provide housing for the workers that they have, because no one's going to drive an hour and a half to, to make nineteen dollars an hour, to make eighteen dollars an hour, it's not happening. So, um, and to your point, Ronnie, I, I feel if, what if those site development costs were a little lower, with those townhouses being a little bit cheaper, and then more of our, more of our patrons would have purchased those? And that's just theory, I'm not saying that a national builder is not going to make their profit and make it whatever they can get out of it, but if it's somebody local that, that does want to build, and two of them have been, come to me as part of those ones that have failed, they were looking at building something that was affordable, that people could afford, so, um, it's a lot of those things there that I just want to bring to everyone's attention, and maybe we can try to get together with the county and the other towns, and see of some way where we can blend this to make this a little bit easier for development to come here, especially for single-family. And that's it, and I'm open to questions and discussion, just something from my heart that I've been thinking on, and it just continues to occur in this one when it hit me, because I thought this one was a go, game over, good to go, and then it hits the brakes like it does, and it just, I felt that I needed to at least get that out, and let, see, let you guys be aware of what, across the industry and civil and land development that we're coming across. Basically, if it's not a national builder that has all those materials already stored, paid for, and they can control the leases, the interest rates, I mean, they're the ones that are, that are building, and I'd like to be able to, if we can, make that a little more of an opportunity for our local developers that, that would provide something that we direly need in this county. Thank you all.
Any questions?
We're to receiving more information about this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, are there other items?
No, sir.
We have some folks that joined us, did you all have something to bring up?
Yeah, I was just interested in that signage hearing, and I'm trying to see how that goes, because I wanted to apply for one property that, I live in Maryland, my daughter has a couple properties here as well. But our property is in the commercial area, so there's been a sign on it before, and we're trying to update it, and probably bring a billboard, so I wanted to see how it goes with signage and maybe other things that's going on in town.
Oh, we don't allow billboards, but.
Oh, no?
No, sir. And if, if you visit our website, we've got the, the specific requirements about various signs, and I can talk to you about that.
I, I never looked into it, so I just tried to find out how some sign hearings go, and other building hearings and stuff like that, because I don't live, I don't live in.
Well, typically, we don't have, signs are administratively reviewed and approved. The sign that was under discussion tonight, because it extended into the right-of-way, that's, that's what requires the special use permit.
We didn't even still have to apply for a normal zoning, and show you everything and meet all the standards.
Correct, well, correct.
Even if it's on a man drag.
As long as it's on.
A sign, and a sign that could bring in business, more business and, and more attention to the town, and, and more traffic.
Well, again, the, the signage on, on your property is specific to the business that you have on your, your property. We don't allow off-site signage for.
Right, but I'm, the, the sign could, could consist of, like, it could be a flashing sign, or.
No, sir.
Messages or something like that.
No, sir, we don't allow off-site signs.
No, you don't allow that?
No, sir. We're.
You can, you can have multiple bill, uh, billboard, uh, flashing signs, that's, that's going to advertise other people's businesses and.
No, sir, we don't allow off-site signage.
Attraction.
No, sir.
Okay, and not, not, not at all, so you can accept the hearing for that?
No, sir.
Okay, so, that's absolutely not, okay, that's one thing, all right, that's one thing to reserve. As far as this young man here, he did this hearing, is that concerning this new development right here? Because I didn't have no, that's by the Walmart. Are you representing that?
Horton? No, I'm the engineer for the developer, which.
Or the.
The whole, the whole.
Oh, okay, good.
We have a separate section, Coach.
Wow, thank you.
Anything else at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, any other discussion from the commission?
Just one, one more question today.
Oh, sure.
There's been like a couple of billboards I've seen, but I know of one at least, that's made out of plywood, and it's, it's right on three forty.
That might be in the county outside the town limits, you'd have to talk with the Page County government for that. We don't allow billboards within the town limits, but if it's outside the town limits in the county, you may be able to talk with them about.
Is that considered outside the town limit on three forty, which is like maybe less than two or three miles from you?
Well, the, the town limits, once you get past Bulldog Field heading out of town, and, and Collins Drive, that's, that's the, the northern boundary of the town, so going further north, most likely you're talking about a sign in the, in the county.
Yeah, there's only one that I've seen up there, so.
They have different regulations. You'd have to talk with the, the county about that.
Also might be political signs.
Well, no, I mean, there are, uh, on, on two eleven, there's a couple of older billboard signs that are outside of town limits. But we just don't allow them.
They pack ahead, so.
Yeah.
Other discussion from the commission? I believe our next meeting is not until August sixteenth. Am I correct on that, Steve?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Yep, it actually.
It's, yeah, it's after the second Monday of the month, so it'd be the sixteenth.
August the sixteenth. And the only, the only other thing that I had was, uh, I had a thought the other day that I wanted to see if maybe there was any interest in the commission in having a, a commission work session. Seems like there've been a number of issues lately, of course, we've talked about them this evening. Um, and we, we look at the matters that come before us, you know, each, each time. But I wondered if we would have any interest in sitting around a table and looking at the, the issues as a whole. Then I thought about the comprehensive plan, and we last updated the comprehensive plan in two thousand nineteen.
We did do some amendments, so we're not, uh, technically bound by twenty twenty-four because we did do the amendment to incorporate the, uh, the, the, the bridge just on the, the east side of town. So that bought us a little bit of extra time, but, um, I think the town would be, would, it would be beneficial if we really earnestly looked at it in twenty twenty-four and then got into every five year being, you know, twenty twenty-five adoption, twenty thirty adoption. So that is something, it is on the horizon.
Seems like you got there quickly.
Yeah.
But like I say, it was just something I thought of that, um, um, as I say, we deal with matters that come before us each meeting. And we've had a good discussion here this evening. Just wondered if there'd be interest in looking at the, the whole big picture. Something we can think about?
Definitely let, um, if, if it would be productive for anybody from council to be present for anything like that. I mean, I'm sure, reach out. A couple of us would.
Sure. And it wouldn't just be a matter of sitting around talking, but we'd have a, a structure, but not an item-by-item agenda like this we need to take action on. A productive process. Any other matters? Okay, we've done our agenda then, so we stand adjourned.